Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, January 8th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Ms. Colasetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. There are no minutes tonight to consider. We'll move on to additions or changes to the agenda. Before we go into that, I wanted to make a statement. I want it to the public. There's a discussion item listed on tonight's agenda entitled "Proposed Urbana International Ceasefire Resolution." As allowed by council rules, this discussion item was added at the request of Councilmember Grace Wilken with a second by Councilmember Chris Evans. I want to make it clear to the public that this item was not initiated by city administration and no draft resolution was submitted to the city council or the public in advance. No votes or formal action will be or can be taken tonight. Furthermore, I'm asking the sponsors of this discussion item to withdraw it completely from the agenda and seek a venue outside city council for this discussion for the following reasons. Number one, this is not city business. This is a policy statement reflecting a one point of view on a very complicated foreign conflict that is beyond the scope of our expertise or knowledge. Two, there is no possibility of a productive outcome from a discussion or vote on this topic in council. The discussion will serve to divide us and permanently damage relationships within our community and outside our community. No matter what position or side one chooses on this issue, it will be causing pain, anguish, and hurt for some Urbana residents. And to what end? What impact will this city council have on the outcome of this conflict? None whatsoever. I ask the sponsors of this agenda item for the good of the community, the whole community, to pull this item from the agenda and seek another path outside of city council encouraging dialogue on this topic. Pursuing a discussion, a debate in city council will do far more harm than good. Mr. Evans, you wish to speak?
Thank you.
During public input?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to move the discussion, well, first of all, change the discussion to a 10-minute presentation and move it to number three under "Presentation and Public Input After Fire Promotions." I will not be removing the item because our citizens have a right to ask their government to address their concerns. This has a precedent. In 2003, the Urbana City Council did pass a resolution against the Iraq War and turned out to be on the right side of history. And this is the concerns of the citizens for, against, neutral, or whatever. This is a big deal to a lot of people in our community, and they have a right to have our government be a forum for their concerns. So I will not be, I will not be, I will not be removing it.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Second?
Yes, second.
All right. It will be moved to a presentation. Item K is off the agenda. We'll go on to first, fire promotions. So I'd like to ask Timothy Moros and Mark Ashby to step forward, and Chief Dade.
Take this down. Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Can everyone hear me pretty well? In the interest of our capacity here, some of our, some of our firefighters may step out if members of the public continue to come in just because we don't want to go over our occupancy. Okay? So do with that first. Other than that, once again, we are here to celebrate a couple of promotions that we've had on our department. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season, and I hope that you find this new year treating you well. The first person, well, before we get into that, oftentimes you'll hear me say that we have a very comprehensive promotional process. And getting to come here and share when we get to watch our members accept their badges is, is very honored privilege for us to be here and do that. It gives us an opportunity to be recognized for the accomplishment of advancing their career within the department. It also gives our members an opportunity to make a public declaration to serve the community in a new capacity. So with that, the first person that we're going to have come up is Lieutenant Timothy Moros. Tim, Tim has served with the Urbana Fire Department for nine years, and he's also one of our paramedics. Previously, before coming to the city of Urbana, Tim served in the United States military for over 15 years and also served in the National Guard. Tonight, pending, oh, and I didn't, he was promoted, I'm sorry, on November 29th of last year, 2023. Also, pending Tim this evening will be retired Battalion Chief Michael Wallace, who served over 26 years with the Urbana Fire Department.
Please raise your right hand. I, Timothy Moros, do solemnly swear.
I, Timothy Moros, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of lieutenant.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of lieutenant.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next up, our next promotion is Battalion Chief Mark Ashby. Battalion Chief Mark Ashby has been with the, this March, he will see 28 years of service with the Urbana Fire Department. Thirteen of those years, Mark served as a lieutenant. While he was here, he has also served as a vice president for our local firefighters' union 1147. He's also been the treasurer and the secretary on our pension board. Tonight, accompanying Mark is his wife, Kim, his son, I'm looking for his son now, his son, Keegan, and his father, Dave Ashby, which happens to be our fire department chaplain. And we do share him. He's also chaplain for Champaign Fire Department. So, and his sister is here as well. So.
Welcome to the family. Please raise your right hand.
Hold on, I'm getting old.
I already have mine. I, Mark Ashby.
I, Mark Ashby.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of Battalion Chief.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of Battalion Chief.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting, acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Most of the time when we do this, you'll see us in our Class A's. A lot of times when we, when we do this to honor our new hires, they don't have a Class A yet, so you'll see them in their Class B uniform. Mark is on duty tonight, and that's why he's not in his Class B. He needs to be able to respond. So once again, we thank you. It's, it's an honor and a privilege to share in this event with you guys, and we thank you for allowing us to do that here.
And we need both individuals to make sure they sign their oaths before they leave. Your first official duty. Okay, now we'll move on to the first presentation of the evening. This is from the Champaign County Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless, Katie Harmon. And this has been postponed at least one meeting, so we're delighted you came back. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
I'll do a quick introduction. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. So this presentation is in response to Council Strategic Area 2 Housing Goal 1C, coordinate with housing and social service agencies to reduce homelessness in our community. So the presentation tonight is from Katie Harmon, who is the coordinator for the Champaign County Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless. Katie has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in social work with a concentration in mental health from the University of Illinois, and has 15 years of experience in direct service and management of homeless services and domestic violence programs. So with that, I will turn it over to Katie.
Thank you so much, Brayden. Can you hear me okay? Thank you so much for having me. So like Brayden said, I'm the Continuum of Care Coordinator, and so I wanted just to spend a little bit of time sharing with you a little bit about our group. I'm not sure how much you know about the Champaign Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless, but then also really focus on our strategic plan that we just approved this past year. So for those who don't know, essentially, the Department of Housing and Urban Development has designated Champaign County as a continuum of care. So we're one of 400, over 400 continuums of care in the, in the United States and one of 20 in the state of Illinois. And essentially, in a, in a quick nutshell, we're really responsible for helping plan and coordinate local response to homelessness. So we're a one-county continuum of care. Some continuum of cares are multi-county, 13, 14 counties. So we're, we're just a one-county continuum of care, which I think has many advantages because we're really, our stakeholders are really knowledgeable about our community and the needs of people experiencing homelessness. This is just a little bit more information. So we really want to make sure that we're providing support and response to making sure the people who have experienced homelessness, who are currently experiencing homelessness, and those at risk of homelessness are met. And so through those means, we also have essentially now three different pools of funding that come through our continuum of care. One federally through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and then two through the state. So one through the Department of, excuse me, Illinois Department of Human Services. And then this past year, we have a new source of funding through the newly established office in the state of Illinois, the Office to Prevent and End Homelessness. So our continuum essentially accepts funding applications, make fun, and makes funding determinations, and allocates those resources to organizations locally in Champaign County. So who participates in our continuum? We have a lot of key stakeholders. Right now, we have over 40 members. So that might be different homeless service programs, other nonprofits. We have faith-based organizations, local governments, healthcare providers, housing advocates, and then also individuals who have lived experience of homelessness participating on our continuum of care. So we have a wide range of people, really anybody who has a vested interest in preventing and ending homelessness. We'd love to see them at the table. This is our mission statement. I won't read it off here. We recently revamped and redid our mission statement. So that's here for, for your reference. Again, it just kind of further goes into the key kind of areas of what we want to accomplish as a, as a group here. So in the last year, we developed a three-year strategic plan. Our strategic plan hadn't been updated in a bit, and we really wanted to focus in on some key priority areas over the next three years. So we had a strategic planning committee that met regularly for several months. We got feedback from our full membership, and then we also got feedback from individuals and organizations who attended a homeless service summit that we hosted along with the United Way. The United Way hosted us to get feedback as well. So it was really a collective effort. But these are our key five priority areas that we have. And I'll just say too, this isn't an exhaustive list. There are, I mean, when it comes to homelessness and supporting people and ending homelessness, preventing homelessness, there's so many different key areas, but we really wanted to focus on kind of five key priority areas for the next three years. So those areas are permanent housing, data utilization and quality equity, landlord engagement, and lived experience representation. So I'm just going to kind of go through some of the areas here. Under each key priority area, we developed strategies and, to accomplish our, kind of our goals here. And so I wanted to make sure that you had a kind of full list of our strategic plan and everything that encompasses. I won't read each thing verbatim here, but I wanted you to have it for your reference. And I'm also happy to send out a PDF copy of our strategic plan if that would be helpful as well. But essentially, when it comes to permanent housing, we're really just focused, focused on expanding permanent housing opportunities for people who are experiencing homelessness in Champaign County. One of the key kind of areas in ending homelessness is increasing affordable permanent housing for people. So that was, is a key focus area for us. And some of the strategies that we developed are specifically targeted at increasing the permanent supportive housing vouchers for homeless households, both with and without children. So some of this data comes from annual, annual data that we collect as a continuum of care and really looking at our housing inventory. So every year, we look at how many emergency shelter beds do we have in Champaign County? How many transitional housing beds do we have? How many permanent supportive housing vouchers? And where are the gaps? And what is the need? So that's kind of looking at our data and specific measurables to increase some of those voucher opportunities that we have available. And when I say permanent supportive housing, permanent supportive housing is focused on providing housing vouchers and rental assistance for people who have a disability who've experienced homelessness. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. So for data quality and utilization, I mentioned our housing inventory count. We're gearing up here to host our annual point-in-time count, which is going to take place on January 24th. And that's essentially a annual, annual event that we survey people who are unsheltered experiencing homelessness and those in shelters, both in emergency programs and transitional housing every year. So we can really see, it's, it's a point-in-time snapshot, so it's not perfect by any means, but it really helps us as a community look at the number of people we have, both in shelter programs and who are unsheltered from year to year. So that's key data that we really want to look at as well. And then another one of our main data sources is many of our programs and providers who offer homeless services here in Champaign County use a database called the Homeless Management Information Systems. And so we're trying to increase the number of organizations who use that database to really look at the data, share it with our full membership, share it with the community in a more, I would say cohesive way, so we can really look at progress that we're making and where gaps might be and areas of improvement. So some of the data pieces are really just improving data, data, excuse me, data gathering and also data literacy. And so our membership really understands the data and can provide input, ask questions, and look at that on a regular basis. Equity is another key, very important area. Black people, people of color, and the LGBTQ+ community experience homelessness disproportionately. So we really want to kind of focus on ways we can look at our homeless services system and see how we can improve it in that manner. Just for an example, in our 2023 point-in-time count, black people made up 63% of those experiencing homelessness despite only making up 14% of the total population in Champaign County. So that's a key kind of area that we want to look at. And here's our, some of our specific strategies. Number one, we've already started. So we're conducting a racial equity analysis of the CSPH. So the Department of Housing and Urban Development provides really helpful, comprehensive guidance of how we can look at our programs and our services utilizing data and see, you know, how we can improve both in terms of access, in terms of service quality, in terms of success. You know, are people leaving shelters into permanent housing opportunities? Are they returning to homelessness? Why is that? And helping to improve. So one of the other areas I wanted to mention, being mindful of time, is that we want to do some key trainings with our membership. Landlord engagement, this is really focused on, you know, in order to increase permanent housing and work with our, our folks who have experienced homelessness to find rental units, we need to have good relationships with landlords. So we really want to get feedback from landlords, bring landlords to the table, invite them to participate in our membership to really hear, to both to educate about our services and also to hear what maybe some of their concerns might be. And then finally, since I, I'm almost out of time, lived experience representation. So this is really, we want to make sure that we have people who've experienced homelessness at the table, both in our full membership and in our executive committee. So we're working on ways of increasing that. We have two seats allocated on our executive committee specifically for people with lived experience representation. So I'm out of time. Those are our kind of key areas in our strategic plan. Thank you so much for letting me share that with you. It's obviously more in-depth, so I can answer any questions, and you can reach out to me directly as well if that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have time for a couple. We have time for a couple of questions. I would ask, can you send a copy of this to the council?
Absolutely. Sure, sure will.
Chris.
Thank you. Is rent too high in Champaign, Urbana?
There is a disparity between income that people have and the cost of housing 100%. This isn't unique just to Urbana. It's nationwide, but I think especially since we, research is showing, coming out of the pandemic in particular with inflation, that people's income isn't, isn't, isn't where it needs to be in terms of being able to afford housing. So it's, it's one of the key causes and contributors of homelessness, yes.
So would you recommend that governments invest in rental assistance?
I think rental assistance is a huge helpful service that can, you know, some, sometimes people just need short-term rental assistance, maybe a couple months. There, I think there are folks who need longer-term rental assistance, and that's why I was mentioning those permanent supportive housing vouchers, which are longer term for people with a disability perhaps who are on a fixed income. Their income levels might not change. We can certainly look at, you know, units that are maybe designated low income for people with disabilities, but there's also a shortage of those. So yes, rental assistance is helpful.
Chandra.
This may be a longer discussion, and if so, we can email back and forth. The low-income housing tax credit, I didn't finish reading that slide, but that sort of caught me because you listed all the local governments. Could you spend two seconds telling me what that is?
Do you want me to take that, or do you want to?
Or Brayden, yeah.
Okay.
So low-income housing tax credit, it's a federal program in Illinois. It runs through the Illinois Department of, Illinois Housing Development Authority. They administer it in Illinois, and it's a tax credit program that developers. They administer it in Illinois, and it's a tax credit program that developers can apply for. Typically, what happens is that cities and nonprofit developers work together to build units, and they submit applications for the LIHTC program, which provides pretty substantial subsidies to build affordable housing. And I think in terms of actually constructing units, it's probably one of the largest financing mechanisms that's out there. So it's a really good avenue. It's, you know, there's a high barrier, you know, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, you know, there's an application process. They are very rigorous in terms of analyzing which projects to fund. We did submit a LIHTC application last year with a private developer. It was not approved for funding, but it was a great experience, and we certainly hope to be pursuing that more in the future. In terms of the goals on the strategic plan, we think countywide, you know, cities and developers should be pursuing that. And so part of the plan is really putting an emphasis on that because really the only way to actually increase the number of units is to just build more. So that's just building up literacy about that, education for developers who might want to apply and haven't before. Those are all strategies that we think can help expand that.
As soon as you said Ida, it came back to me.
Yes, yeah.
Thanks, Brayden. I knew he would explain that way more succinctly than I could. Thank you.
Thank you. I should have introduced Brayden Belcher, our grants manager, as well. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation, I'll let either Grace or Chris introduce.
Okay, I'll introduce. Yeah, our next presentation is by Ben Jocelyn, resident of Urbana, who brought before us about a month ago the idea of a possible resolution similar to the Iraq resolution back in 2003 to, well, I'll let him explain it, but Ben, you have the floor, sir.
And you'll have 10 minutes.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for giving me this time. When I first proposed this, I thought that we would have a chance to talk with one another, and quickly it became an issue that had a lot of participation, which clearly means that there's a lot of folks who care a lot about this. I want to talk briefly just about why I'm here. I'm here to promote peace, safety, and justice. I know that everybody here wants to be safe and wants safety for the people that they love. We all come from different experience, history, joy, and trauma. We almost agree that bigotry, including but not limited to antisemitism and Islamophobia, must be recognized as real and must be actively combated in order to ensure the safety of all people. This is a hard time for everybody who is here, but I do believe that we can build a safer, better world for all of us, and that I believe that it's our job to do so. This is a presentation I put together by myself, and I hope that you can see it as viewed by me, and it was not made in collaboration with the older people who've graciously given me the time to present. The most acute moment that's brought us here is the October 7th, on October 7th, Hamas and extremist Islamic militants attacked Israel. Approximately 1,200 people were killed by them at that time, and 240 were taken hostage. Israel immediately responded with a prolonged military campaign against Gaza and heightened its siege. For its response, Israel has been charged with genocide in the International Court of Justice. 22,000 are dead, 9,000 of whom are children, dozens of journalists, mothers, fathers, grandparents, artists, nurses, troublemakers, and poets. The mosques have been destroyed, churches, schools, and bakeries. People are being killed in their homes and being killed in safe zones. Nine in 10 people in Gaza are eating less than one meal a day, according to the World Food Program. That's not up there, but it's an important statistic. Their government is openly stating its intent to give it genocide, and this case is well documented by the charges that South Africa has put forward in the International Court of Justice. This slide here shows just a little bit of history of the comparative death tolls of Israeli and Palestinian fatalities. They are stacked bar graphs. This is the approximate ones for 2023, but you can see the little bits of purple just about every year on average. There's generally about 20 Palestinian casualties to this conflict for every Israeli fatality. That's not meant to minimize any fatality. All lives are precious, but it is, but in paying attention to this, Palestinians often talk about how their voices are minimized, and I believe that that is borne out in the media's portrayal. The U.S. is paying for and making this genocide possible. The United States is currently giving $3.8 billion a year in military aid to Israel. No military aid or political support is being given to Hamas. This is not a suggestion, I want to be very clear. It is simply a statement of our position. The U.S. has vetoed several ceasefire measures in both the U.N. Security Council and the U.N. as a whole, increasingly marginalizing ourselves and isolating ourselves in support of this campaign. We continue to sell and ship weapons to Israel and ignore warnings of genocide. The continued resistance to ceasefire that we have put forward on the international level makes it impossible for necessary aid to reach the Palestinians in Gaza, which leaves them without enough aid for survival. Our role in Urbana, as members of the world community, we have a responsibility to attempt to protect those who are being targeted for their status. Right now, it is Palestinians who are being actively killed and forced to live under conditions that lead to death. And looking over this slide, I want it to say primarily Palestinians because I do not want to minimize, and I realize this slide does minimize, the hostages that are being still held in Palestine, in Gaza. I do also want to recognize that most hostages who've come home, have come home under conditions of ceasefire, and that recently three hostages were killed during hostilities who should have been, and I wish were brought home safely. As a nation, we're paying $3.8 billion in military aid to Israel, which, if you divide by the U.S. population, is around $11 per person per year, which means that the people of Urbana, who number around 38,000 people, are paying around $400,000 a year in direct military aid to Israel, even as it kills thousands of innocent people. So I do feel that it is our job to call for peace. Ceasefire is a peaceful word. Ceasefire means no killing, no killing by anyone, no conditions that lead to death. It is a morally necessary call, and I believe that this will lead to a safer world for I've attached a link, I wasn't sure how quickly I'd run out of time, to the proposal, which I don't know how to open in this moment, but it's been connected. Here is the proposed proposal. So this is not the one that I'm, as you said, no votes will be taken today. Nobody has seen this before. It is only my proposal and should be seen as such. And it says, whereas the Palestinian people of Gaza are currently facing a campaign of collective punishment by the State of Israel, and whereas the collective punishment is categorized as war crime and prohibited by a treaty under international law, according to comment Article III. I guess that it continues and goes on for a fair bit here. But I just want to take a moment to say that I'm not here because I want harm to come to anybody. I'm here because there are atrocities that are happening in this world that our government is failing to address. 80% of the people, no, sorry, over 60% of people who polled in this country were shown to be pro ceasefire, and 80% of Democrats. This is a popular call. I've been calling my representatives, and other municipalities around the nation have been passing this, or similar ceasefire measures. Iowa City has passed a ceasefire measure. Madison has passed a ceasefire measure. Dayton, Ohio has passed a ceasefire measure. Seattle, Washington, and dozens of other cities are passing ceasefire measures towards peace, towards calling on our government, which is failing on the international level, to heed this call. And so with the failing of our national government, and because we are complicit and paying for the crimes that are happening, it is important that we can push on our local governments to have us be heard, because I've called Nikki Buzinski so many times, and she has not taken a side to stand for ceasefire. I've called, Dick Durbin actually did call for a ceasefire and then kind of wavered on a little bit, and Tammy Duckworth has not, but has not called for ceasefire. But I think that it's important that municipalities can listen to their constituents, who then can amplify their voices and call for peace. And so this is a, this is not because we have no other measures, and it's not because we simply want to waste your time. I just wanted to talk to you about it, and the people care. And Right now, there are mothers who can't find clean water to give to their infants in Gaza. There are people having C-sections without proper anesthesia. Hospitals have been bombed, and they cannot get good medical care. There are children, there's a new acronym for Wounded Child's No Living Family that is being used by the doctors and medical people who are still in Gaza. The atrocities go on and on. The access to water is below survival levels. It's not below suggested levels. It's not below the amount of level that they, you know, hope that you have in wartime. It's below the minimum level that they believe that you can survive upon. Folks are wasting away. The United States has continued to be a barrier to sufficient aid reaching these people, and it is on us to stand up and do what is right. So this is a proposal that I'm asking you to consider for all of our hearts and for the people of Gaza and for the people of the world. Thank you very much.
Chris, we have time for one or two.
Thanks, Diane. Thanks, Ben. It's never easy to do the brave thing and speak up. Could you maybe, you know, what we heard a lot today was Israel's right to defend themselves, and this is the fault of Hamas and no other. Could you maybe, I guess I need you to do a couple things, and that for me, anyway, is, you know, to emphasize that your resolution is not taking sides, and you don't condone at all what Hamas did, or, and, you know, this is about everybody, right?
This measure is about calling for peace, and while the events that have recently happened were escalated and the atrocities that happened on October 7th are not what I'm trying to, I condemn the war crimes that happened on that day. I am trying to bring about peace. And I'm not trying to say that we should have anything happen in that, or the proposed ceasefire resolution is talking about the response of Israel, and the response of Israel was to create genocidal conditions in Gaza. And there is no actions that can be taken. And actually, if it's, if I can cite from the first paragraph of the, so here is the charges that South Africa has given to the International Court of Justice for its charges of genocide. It says, "This application concerns acts threatened, adopted, condoned, taken, and being taken by the government and military of the State of Israel against the Palestinian people, a distinct national, racial, and ethnic group in the wake of the attacks in Israel on October 7th, 2023. South Africa unequivocally condemns all violations of international law by all parties, including the direct targeting of Israeli civilians and other nationals and hostage-taking by Hamas and other Palestinian armed groups. No armed attack on the state's territory, no matter how serious, even an attack involving atrocity crimes, can however, provide any possible justification for or defense to breaches of the 1948 Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, whether as a matter of law or morality. The acts and emissions by Israel complained of, by South Africa, are genocidal in character because they are intended to bring about the destruction of a substantial part of the Palestinian national racial and ethnic group, that being part of the Palestinian group in the Gaza Strip, Palestinians in Gaza." So in any case, where it starts is, it acknowledges the atrocities, condemns them unequivocally, and goes on to say, "Their response, however, with now over 20,000 people being killed and folks not having food, water, over 60% of houses being destroyed," and goes on and cites for pages, clear incitement to genocide by folks like Benjamin Netanyahu, who incites the biblical story of Amalek, in which they talk about slaughtering all of the people. And there are several other sort of statements in which it cites not only the genocidal actions, but intention of member after member after member of the Israeli military and government structure.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to public input. So if any member of the audience wishes to address the council, please step up to the mic, and you have up to five minutes to speak, and please state your name.
The mic can be brought to me?
Yes, the mic can be brought to you, and then please state your name for the record.
Should I start?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Da'ed Asuqi, or Dua al-Dasuqi. I am a local healthcare professional, a business owner, and a mother. I'm also a member of the Palestinian diaspora. My grandfather's family lived in a little village outside of Yaffa, as did their grandfathers. And during the Nakba, which is the Palestinian catastrophe, where thousands of Palestinians were killed and hundreds of thousands were expelled or forced to flee between 1947 and 1949, my great-grandfather fled with his family east, eventually reaching Jordan, instead of south, where the majority of Palestinians from Yaffa fled to. If he had chosen to go south, though, I would be the woman under the rubble. I would be the wife widowed, crying over her lost husband. I would be the mother crying, carrying her child in a white shroud in her arms, feeling pain unbearable to describe. I would be the mother searching through body bags, looking for her daughter, for her son, trying to find something recognizable from their mutilated bodies that have been torn apart by dumb bombs and shrapnel, or crushed by concrete buildings crumbling on top of them. If my great-grandfather had chosen to go south instead of east, I would be in the Gaza Strip today, or I would be amongst those under the rubble. But I'm here, in Urbana-Champaign, and so I tell their story, not because they are voiceless, but because the world has been deaf to their cries for help for over 75 years. Palestinians in the Gaza Strip have been bombed indiscriminately for 95 days, 95 continuous days, where a bomb is dropped every five minutes and a person is killed every four. There is no silence in Gaza. It's either bomb-filled skies or drones that are buzzing overhead. The entire population is currently starving due to the siege by Israeli forces, the bombing, and the insufficient aid being allowed in. 2 million Palestinians in Gaza are currently displaced out of 2.3 million. That is basically the entire population. 60% of all homes and residential buildings have been destroyed. No place is safe. Over 30,000 people have been killed, if you count the 8,000 missing under the rubble. Over 13,000 missing under the rubble, over 13,000 children, over 100 journalists, over 300 healthcare professionals, in 95 days. No one is safe, all funded and approved by our country. So I am here as a local resident, asking our city council to do what it can to end this. We cannot live in a world where we normalize genocide, where genocide is an answer, ever, where 13,000 children can be murdered over just three months, and we don't do everything within our capacity to end it. This cannot be the world we live in. This genocide will be studied by our children and their children for years to come, the Gaza massacre, the Gaza genocide of 2023, and they will ask themselves the same questions we asked ourselves when we studied the Trail of Tears, or when we studied the Holocaust. How could they, how could we let this happen? So I ask you again to do what is within your power to help end this, and it starts with a ceasefire. Thank you.
Our council rules provide that if more than 20 people wish to speak during public input, we can ask that you use three minutes to speak instead of five, and I'm going to ask you as the chair to do that, so everyone has a chance to speak. I'm county. I think I've got nearly 40 people who want to speak, so please limit your comments to three minutes, so everyone can speak. Go ahead.
Mark Snier, a local citizen of the city of Urbana. The murder of close to 1,000 civilians, men, women, and children, the desecration of their bodies, the multiple rapes, and the hostage-taking on October 7th was an horrible act of barbarism. The deaths and suffering inflicted on the inhabitants of the Gaza Strip by the subsequent Israeli attack, and by the willingness of Hamas to sacrifice civilians to advance its cause are terrible. The Hamas terrorist organization has a goal of eliminating the State of Israel and getting rid of Jews in between the river and the sea. Many politicians in Israel express a desire to get rid of Palestinians in the Gaza Strip. The race for mutual destruction cannot be allowed to continue. However, a ceasefire that lives in place Hamas reign of terror in Gaza will only be a flail preceding the next round of violence, a prelude to the next descent into the heart of darkness. A ceasefire resolution by the city of Urbana will not help the victims of the conflict in any way. The only possible effect is to further inflame the tensions between communities in Urbana, and further encourage antisemitism and Islamophobia. The city of Urbana has many inhabitants that care deeply about the ongoing conflict, Palestinians and Arabs, Israelis and Jews. Each community feels the need to do something in support of its side in this conflict. But the conflict will not end with a victory of one side, but with a dialogue and a compromise. The city of Urbana can help not by taking sides in the conflict, but by promoting the dialogue between communities in Urbana. If Jews and Arabs cannot create bridges in Urbana, that one chance is therefore a dialogue in the Middle East.
Hi there. My name is Dana Anastasia. I'm a resident of East Urbana, and I'm here to speak in favor of the ceasefire resolution. Being presented to the council this evening, I realize that none of you have gotten a chance to see the resolution, and I genuinely hope that you will take the time to look at it once it's sent along to you, and to consider its words. I feel strongly that the city of Urbana should use what humble power it has to function as a voice for peace in this time of horrific violence. I'm going to shorten my comments, because I'll go over three minutes if I don't. I'm neither Palestinian nor Israeli nor Jewish. My mother's family, however, fled genocide just over 100 years ago, as Greek Christians living in their ancestral home in western Turkey. While most of my family escaped with their lives, millions of Greeks and Armenians did not. While most of my family escaped with their lives, they lost their homes, their belongings, their land, and much of their culture. To this day, more than a century later, the Turkish government still denies that any genocide or campaign of displacement ever occurred. As a person living within this brutal legacy, I feel the unfolding destruction in Gaza on a visceral level. My pro-yaya, my grandmother Anthula, who escaped genocide was a musician. Her granddaughter, my mother, Anthia, is a poet. I am both, so I will leave you with a poem. This poem was written by Hiva Abu Nada, Palestinian poet and educator, on October 7th, 2023. Sorry, I think that's supposed to say November 7th, 2023. I grant you refuge. One, I grant you refuge in invocation and prayer. I bless the neighborhood and the minaret to guard them from the rocket, from the moment it is a general's command until it becomes a raid. I grant you and the little ones refuge, the little ones who change the rocket's course before it lands with their smiles. Two, I grant you and the little ones refuge, the little ones now asleep like chicks in a nest. They don't walk in their sleep toward dreams, they know death lurks outside the house. Their mother's tears are now doves following them, trailing behind every coffin. Three, I grant the father refuge, the little one's father who holds the house upright. When it tilts after the bombs, he implores the moment of death, "Have mercy, spare me a little while, for their sake I've learned to love my life." Four, I grant you refuge from hurt and death, refuge in the glory of our siege, here in the belly of the whale. Our streets exalt God with every bomb. They pray for the mosques and the houses, and every time the bombing begins in the north, our supplications rise in the south. Five, I grant you refuge from hurt and suffering with words of sacred scripture. I shield the oranges from the sting of phosphorus, and the shades of cloud from the smog. I grant you refuge in knowing that the dust will clear, and they who fell in love and died together will one day laugh. Hiba was killed by Israeli forces during a raid in South Gaza on October 20th, 2023. October 7th was correct. She was 32 years old.
Hi, my name is Bara Sada. I'm a local community member and resident physician at Carl Foundation Hospital, and the past executive director of IVC and Community Health Center. I'm here to support the ceasefire resolution. This city is where I belong. It's where I've been my, almost my entire life, but I have roots tying me to Palestine, and specifically Gaza, where my family resides. I've experienced the devastating loss of over 10 family members, majority of them children. This uncertainty surrounding the well-being of the remaining family that we have adds to the deep emotional toll. I am one of you guys. The last we heard, my mom's uncle has a chronic health condition. Because the hospitals were shut down, and because transportation was completely destroyed, he ended up dying because of a simple reason: he could not get dialysis, something easily preventable. So this is an issue that deeply affects many citizens of our community. One longtime Urbana family here lost all his brothers, his sisters, and all their children, and his parents, all in one night. They all lived in the same apartment building. Nobody should have to go through that. And with each day, it becomes a greater possibility, day by day, for families just like mine, just like his, and others in this community. At this point, it's not about supporting Palestine, it's not about supporting Israel or any other groups. It's about stopping the indiscriminate killing of children and innocent people. And a dialogue is difficult to have when you're actively watching your family and their children being killed. It is important to support a ceasefire in order to have that dialogue that can lead to long-lasting peace. As winter approaches, and we have a snowstorm tonight, I hope no family in Champagne, Urbana, or worldwide has to go through what mine has had to. Thank you so much.
Some of us have met before. My name is Patsy Owl. I lived in Urbana for a very long time, until I had to go live with my daughter. A couple of things. Already, there's been a distortion tonight of this issue. This is not a war, and this is not a conflict. Wars and conflict, one side has weaponry, one side has, both sides have a certain amount of power. This is genocide. The other thing I'd like to point out is that this is not, this is not a Muslim issue. This is a humanitarian issue. And it's not about any religion, but in fact, it's, it's a, it's a agenda, it's a political agenda. And in that agenda, we need to be very careful, because it's also going to set a preference around the world. Whoever a powerful government wants to get rid of, they'll be able to do that, if people just keep quiet. So this is an important, very important time to make these decisions. A ceasefire all over the country by lower governments is very, very important, not only for everyone here. You all have a chance, in this historical moment, to stand up against the killing of children, against the genocide of a whole, of a whole group of people. I'm sorry, I used to speak better, but now I'm getting old. But I did want to make it really clear what you're dealing with, and what is going to be on your conscience. So when you go home at night and close your eyes, it'd be like your champagne said, "We want Urbana. We want the land, we want the resource of Urbana." And just came and killed all your children, and just took it over. So again, this is not a Muslim, this is not a Jewish issue. This is a humanitarian issue, and it's also a precedent for what could happen in the future. So please consider this seriously. Don't just sit there when babies are being burnt, when bag after bag, with little babies are being tossed in a corner. Please, take this seriously.
Excuse me, I have to sit down, my back is not well. Thank you. I'm Walid Jasim. I'm a resident of this area for over 45 years. I would like to make a, I'm a U.S. citizen. Originally, I come from Iraq. I have, the person who works with my father is a Jew, and we call him Uncle Subi. We loved him, they loved us, we ate at their house, they ate at our house, and so on and so forth. Like she said, like Sister Patsy said, "It's not an issue about religion whatsoever. It's really the issue of Zionism." We have absolutely no issue with Jews whatsoever. That's one. Second thing is, if this issue between Palestinian and Zionism right now, what the hell is the U.S. has to do with sending them money to buy and drop bombs? Why don't we do this to drop bombs on China? Why don't you buy bombs to drop it on? This is not reasonable. And we have a president that will stand up and say, "I'm a Zionist." Really? This is, you should be an American, and before he's a Zionist. But that by itself is a spitting in every person in their face. This is, like I said, we have, we have grew up, like I said, my Uncle Subi is, we ate and sat in his lap, his children sat in my father's lap, and we were happy family. They didn't, no, they didn't have to. No, well, no, they did not.
Please let the speaker speak.
They did not, they did not have to leave Iraq whatsoever. So anyway, in this particular case, we really ask you to use your conscience, and pay attention to what's going on in the world, and go for ceasefire. Now, at least you get that thing out of your, out of your system. Why continue? Why continue dropping bombs? And also, I want to know why my tax dollars is going to purchase bombs to be dropped on people? Why? So please, please use your conscience. We beg you. May God bless you also. Salam aleik.
Good evening, I'm Mark Ansel. I'm a resident of Urbana, and I have been a resident of Urbana for a number of decades. The tragedy in the Middle East, you've been hearing a good part of that story tonight, although you haven't heard the whole story, because as I understand it, we're not here at the moment to debate the resolution. We're here to talk about whether you want to debate the resolution, whether you want to take it up as an issue. I'm a citizen of Urbana. It is my view that we elect you to represent us on issues of the city of Urbana. I've heard the government mentioned on several occasions here, "The government should do this, the government should do that." And probably there's a lot of agreement on that. But there are different areas of government in this country. This is the city of Urbana. And speaking for myself, I don't have to take sides to say that I think that the city council should deal with the issues of the city of Urbana, which are demanding and important. And they should not take the time to do something that will make half the city feel good and half the city feel bad, and no practical difference in the outcome. This is not the place for you all to take your time to talk about international relations that will make no practical difference. I think there are other governments that we all are citizens of that we must address, and we must reach out to. But I ask you all to address the problems of the city of Urbana, and the issues that are going to have an impact on the citizens of the city of Urbana. You might do something to make half the city feel good and half the city feel bad if you're to pass some type of resolution on this issue. But that, but doing some-
Ma'am, let the speaker speak.
But doing something to make half the people in the city feel good, and half the people of the city feel bad on an issue such as this, is making the matter worse locally, where I think your responsibilities really lie. I'm asking you to take care of the business of the city of Urbana while we all fight for what we think of as justice in the Middle East, and in this country, and in the world. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jake McGinty. I grew up in the Champagne-Urbana Jewish community at Sinai Temple in upbringing, I have a very fond memory of and feel lucky to have had. When I consider talking about Palestine publicly at the city council meeting, I felt fear. I've experienced real antisemitism. I have hidden the fact that I'm Jewish for fear of my safety. The long history of pain in the region that Israel currently occupies can hardly be expressed with language. I am here to clarify in certain words that it is not antisemitic to denounce the actions of the Israeli government, one that has killed 23,000 people in three months, over half of which civilians. The fear I feel today was not antisemitism, but for the hate I can face simply as a Jew that supports the Palestinian human rights and agency, a stance often and strategically conflated with actual antisemitism. Horrible atrocities are being committed as we speak by a group that claims it's in the name of a Jewish state. Israel, as a political entity, claims to represent all Jewish people. Valid Jewish fear and valid Jewish grief is being weaponized as a moral cover for horrifying atrocities to be committed against the Palestinians. I am distraught and enraged that the typical insinuation that being Jewish would oblige someone to support a government's open, unapologetic dedication to the systematic genocide of Palestinian people is normalized in the U.S. Urbana isn't making bombs being dropped in Gaza, even though the U.S. is. Urbana doesn't have a direct line to Netanyahu to try to convince him to stop either. At first, I thought a resolution by the city in the Midwest might be pointless, but then I remembered the significance of the chilling effect, and how violent and telling inaction can be, how far a terrifying idea can go when not actively opposed at every level. Urbana has an opportunity now to be decisive, to give recognition, and to collectively denounce acts that we must never and will never tolerate, and it will be a connecting moment for all of us. Thank you for your time and attention.
"It's Also Fine," by Palestinian poet Murid Barghouti.
Excuse me, could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Elizabeth Sodropoulos. "It is also fine to die in our beds, on a clean pillow and among our friends. It's fine to die once, our hands crossed on our chests, empty and pale, with no scratches, no chains, no banners, and no petitions. It's fine to have a clean death with no holes in our shirts and no evidence in our ribs. It's fine to die with a white pillow, not the pavement, under our cheek, with our hands resting in those of our loved ones, surrounded by desperate doctors and nurses, with nothing left but a graceful farewell, paying no attention to history, leaving this world as it is, hoping that someday, someone else will change it." Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Sodropoulos, and I want to be one of those someone elses who will change the world so that we leave it better for our children, and I hope that you will join me in being a someone else too. I have devoted a lot of my life to advocating for children's rights and family preservation, in part because I understand the pain of being born into homelessness and being raised with zero knowledge of who and where I came from. I am an educator, I am a small business owner, and I serve students from Urbana. I believe that liberation is a shared cause, which is what brings me here tonight. Every day for the past three months, I've watched stories from Gaza, from heroes I never knew I had before last October. Every morning, I checked Instagram and TikTok, hoping to hear, "Hey, everyone, it's me, Bisan from Gaza, and I'm still alive." I look, I look for Motaz. I cry as his friends are martyred. I hope for Plessia's safety. I watch as American-made bombs are dropped by the Israeli occupational forces, but more substantially, I watch as Palestinian people have more courage than any human should ever be forced to have. I'm here tonight asking you to have just some of that courage, to have this hard conversation, and also to vote unanimously for a ceasefire resolution because this is our issue. I have watched as grocery bags are stuffed with pieces of sacred human bodies, as children identify their mothers by their hair. I have watched as men wearing flip-flops dig survivors out of concrete rubble. This resolution by itself will not bring about a ceasefire. Many of us here already understand that in our souls, the magnitude of force needed to stop the evil of a far-right government murdering tens of thousands of civilians with the full support of the American government. And maybe some of you are thinking, "What good is this symbolic gesture?" But this is exactly what Palestinian people have asked us to do. Their liberation is bound up in ours and ours and theirs. The people of Palestine who have been bombed and starved mercilessly, who have experienced the unrelenting war crimes of the I.O.F. for three months and seven decades have asked us to amplify their voices, to demand a ceasefire, to fight for justice and liberation for all oppressed people. I know it's not very much, but it's what I can do. And I hope you'll join me.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Urbana. My name is Luke Lee. I'm a resident of Champagne, Urbana, here to talk, say words in support of a ceasefire. I'm disappointed tonight to hear the mayor of Urbana say that talking about mass murder and the service of colonization is something that we should avoid, because it might divide us. I'm always disappointed when people believe that an occupation has the right to harm someone from the people they're occupying. So I'm going to read a poem by Noor Hindy. "Fuck Your Lecture on Craft, My People Are Dying." Colonizers write about flowers. I tell you about children throwing rocks at Israeli tanks, seconds before becoming daisies. I want to be like those poets who care about the moon. Palestinians don't see the moon from jail cells and prisons. It's so beautiful, the moon. They're so beautiful, the flowers. I pick flowers for my dead father when I'm sad. He watches Al Jazeera all day. I wish Jessica would stop texting me Happy Ramadan. I know I'm American because when I walk into a room, something dies. Metaphors about death are for poets who think ghosts care about sound. And when I die, I promise to haunt you forever. One day, I'll write about the flowers like we own them. The people of the world, the people of Urbana, call you to support a ceasefire. We call you to say no to Zionism. We call you to say no to displacement. We call you to say no to apartheid. We call you to say yes to human rights and yes to justice. Be on the right side of history.
Dear council members, my name is Aviror. I work at the University of Illinois. I'm not, I'm not from Urbana originally, I'm from Israel, from the southern part of Israel. And I want to say a few words about this decision or what people want the decision to be. My family and I have been directly affected by the October 7 terror attack of Hamas against Israeli civilians. We woke up to find out that our friends and family should, I don't know, should hide inside shelters after 1,500 people were brutally murdered, raped, burned, beheaded, butchered, and kidnapped by Hamas terrorists in this early morning. They had to hide in the shelters because while the Hamas terrorists came in to commit those atrocities, they also fired about 2,200 rockets into Israel towns in the south. This, as we know, did not help all of the people in the south because one of my friends, which I knew from the age of 15, got butchered, she, her husband, two little daughters, and one little boy. Got butchered and beheaded in the south of Israel by the Hamas. No applause, no nothing for people who are dying? Okay, so today, people want you to discuss on some ceasefire concept that will take place or a resolution for a ceasefire. Now, this, this deep absurdity of the idea of ceasefire is simple because on the 6th of October, there was a ceasefire. Nothing happened. Israel didn't bomb Gaza. No one, no children in Gaza was dying because of that. Nothing happened on October 6th. But on October 7th, the Hamas opened one of the most brutally terror attacks in history. Now, people here are asking for you to vote and for the state of Israel to go back to this situation where Hamas is still the ruler of Gaza, still the ruler of the Palestinian people in Gaza, and still have the ability to commit these atrocities and to fire rockets on the state of Israel. Now, even more than that, sorry, there is one atrocities that people in this entire place didn't talked about yet, and those are the hostages. Everybody is speaking about, "Let's take a ceasefire, let's stop fighting and everything." What will be with the hostages? Shouldn't they go out? Shouldn't they get back to their families? 130 people which have been kept in captivity as human shields for the leadership of Hamas. One little boy, one years old, which his name is Kfir Bibas, still in the tunnels, in the tunnels in Gaza. And what I want to say is just that this kind of absurdity should not take place. People here are forgetting that Israel is under attack constantly, and this whole thing happened.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josh. I'm a resident of Champagne, Urbana. I was in Jerusalem on October 7th. I woke up to air raid sirens in my roommate pounding on our door to tell us to get into the bomb shelter. I was there to teach English for a year in the city of Jerusalem, and it was cut short because of this terrorist attack. Immediately, I checked my phone, and what do I see? Nothing but snuff films and nothing but people gleefully cheering it on online. People who could consider themselves even left-wing and progressive were saying, "This is acts of resistance. You do not resist by raping and murdering people." But that aside, it's disturbing to me that the city council is even considering this. This is simply not city council business, plain and simple. And even if it was city council business, it takes two sides to tango. Hamas and Israel, they are fighting, and neither side of them wants a ceasefire, neither the Israeli government nor the Hamas-run government in Gaza. In fact, there was a potential for a ceasefire after the original one, which ended hostilities for a week, that Hamas rejected back a few weeks ago. You can look that up. But as Mr. Evans said, 20 years ago, we had a ceasefire, or I'm sorry, a resolution here commenting against the Iraq War. Well, there's been a whole lot of conflicts in those past 20 years. Why have we not also called for ceasefires and end of hostilities in Myanmar, Sudan, Ukraine, the Democratic Republic of the Congo, Turkey, Indonesia, Syria, Somalia, Morocco, more? Took two years for Ethiopia and the Tigray People's Liberation Front to come to a ceasefire. Why did Urbana City Council say nothing? Why has nobody on the council said anything about Sudan's army negotiating with the Rapid Support Forces, which recently their commander, the commander of the Sudanese army said, "Oh, there cannot be any cessation of hostilities because of the crimes they've committed." Why have we never said anything about China with their repression of the Uighur Muslims, forced labor, sterilization, suppression of religious and cultural practices? We have not said anything calling on Morocco to end their 49-year occupation of Western Sahara, Turkey's 50-year occupation of Northern Cyprus, Indonesia's 61-year occupation of West Papua. There have been 6 million people killed in the Democratic Republic of the Congo since 1996. The siege of Mariupol in Ukraine, which lasted for three months, killed 25,000 civilians out of a pre-war population of 500,000. Surely, the Urbana City Council should have said something to stop the bloodshed. Did we say anything when Azerbaijan invaded Armenia in September of 2023 and expelled 100,000 people? Why are we not focused on the antisemitic incidents that occur in this very town? There are, the Chabad menorah is year after year, knocked over and vandalized. Does the city council say anything? Do we say anything when the graves in St. Mary's Cemetery were vandalized with swastikas and racial slurs? Do we say anything when posters of hostages are just torn down by people who know nothing better than what they're doing? In conclusion, this is not city council business. You know what your mission statement says, and I'm just going to end with that. Establishes laws for citizen welfare, determines policies that govern providing municipal services, and approves mayoral appointments. That's your role, stick to it.
Hi, good evening. My name is Matthew Murray. I'm a resident of Urbana for over 30 years. I want to strongly support the city council taking up a call for a ceasefire in this conflict. It somewhat blows my mind that the call for a ceasefire and end of hostilities is somehow seen as favoring one side simply because that one side has said it is. I also find it interesting, I found it ironic at the beginning with Mayor Marlin wanting to remove this from the discussion, essentially saying it had nothing to do with city business. And people have rightly pointed out that all the money that is being given in weaponry and funds to Israel comes from our tax money, and it starves, it starves us. And I also thought it was interesting in the firefighters taking their oath of office, they were swearing to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. That has nothing to do with city business, but it has everything to do with our social fabric and upholding the rule of law. And rule of law would require the United States to subject the weapons that are being sent to scrutiny of how they're being used. And currently, they are being used indiscriminately. To the, I mean, every day, about 200 civilians I see dead. And it breaks my heart, it breaks my heart to hear of the atrocities committed against Israeli civilians. I don't discriminate between the two when they're attacked. And so I would beg of people to raise our voice as a city to call for a ceasefire, and I hope that will filter up, and our representative, Bozinski, will come to her senses and at the very least, push for a ceasefire, which in some ways, I'm afraid, is getting to a point where it's almost too late. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tanya Yonin, and I'm the elected board president of the Champagne, Urbana Jewish Federation. There are many different voices in the Champagne, Urbana Jewish community, and there are many different views in our community. I'm here not to express any particular political point of view, but rather to point out, as some of the other speakers have done as well, that it is not the job of a city government to pass resolutions on international matters. As we have already heard, the city council of Urbana did not pass a resolution condemning the Hamas attacks on October 7th, or urge for the release of hostages, or take a stand in any other conflict over the past 20 years, such as the war in Sudan or the Russian invasion and continuing war in Ukraine. There is no reason for the Urbana City Council to pass a resolution regarding an international matter, given that this is not what the council were elected to do. This would serve absolutely no purpose in the Middle East and in resolving the conflict, and would only foster divisiveness in the community. Singling out only Israel for condemnation, we have, sure, we have not seen the full text of the proposed resolution, but from everything that has been said, it has sounded it would be a resolution making particular demands on Israel. Doing so when there has been no similar resolutions condemning any or with regard to any other conflict anywhere in the world in the past 20 years applies a double standard to Israel, which certainly feels quite antisemitic. Putting forth such a resolution would only foster divisiveness in the community in a climate when antisemitism is already on the rise, both locally and nationally. I think that the time of the city council would be much better spent on local matters and fostering local dialogue within the local community rather than on international matters. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Blanco, and I'm a local community member, and I want to speak in favor of the ceasefire resolution. I went to Palestine in 2016 during an American election year, and one of the people I met there said something about American politics that I'll never forget, that it affects Palestinians more than it affects Americans. The person who said this was a woman named Cedar. In 1948, at the age of 12, Cedar and her family fled their home in Haifa after settler militias blew up their neighbor's house. And she became one of the more than 700,000 Palestinians driven from their homes in a mass ethnic cleansing campaign known as the Nakba, or catastrophe, in order to establish the state of Israel. Many years later, Cedar was able to return to her hometown, which is very rare for Palestinian refugees. And she learned that a family of Israeli settlers was living in her childhood home, which is not rare at all. Today, Palestinian refugees, those ethnically cleansed in the 1948 Nakba and their descendants, number in the millions. 2 million of them live in Gaza, making up the vast majority of Gaza's population. And they are currently experiencing another Nakba. Millions have already lost their homes, and the Israeli government has been very clear about their intentions to empty Gaza of Palestinians and replace them with Israeli settlers. If you haven't read South Africa's suit charging Israel with genocide, I encourage you to take a look at it, especially the nine-page section on expressions of genocidal intent, where they quote an Israeli official calling for a Nakba that will overshadow the Nakba 48. Cedar was absolutely right. American politics and American government have a huge impact on the lives of Palestinians. The United States is supplying Israel's weapons. If they decide the genocide ends today, it ends today. A huge majority of Americans support a ceasefire, yet our government isn't backing us up on this. By passing a ceasefire resolution, the Urbana City Council has the power to amplify the voices of the millions of Americans who want the genocide to stop. I hope that you'll stay on the right side of history and pass the ceasefire resolution.
Hello, can everybody hear me? I was hearing, there was some concerns with hearing. Okay. My name is Dakia Alamin. I'm a resident of Champagne, Urbana. I'm a local teacher and administrator at a homeschool co-op. I also serve on the board of Mass Muslim American Society, Urbana Champagne Chapter. And I am here to call for a ceasefire. I am here not only for my Palestinian neighbors, I am here for my Palestinian friends, I am here for my Palestinian students, who I see day in, day out, going through the trauma of what they have to see, what all of us have to see. I am here because I want to be on the right side of history. And with my small voice or the small power I have, I'm calling on you, elected officials, who also have power, to stand up on the right side of history. We are going to, we are going to, our students in this country are going to study this at some point in time. And they are going to wonder, what did people say? How did they use their platform? How did they use their voice? So I am a resident of this city, and I am a U.S. citizen, and I'm calling on you to use your position to call for a ceasefire. Thank you.
My name is George, and I'm here speaking tonight in support of the resolution, calling for a ceasefire. Gaza is a narrow strip of land that's roughly as long as the distance from Savoy to Rantoul. It's roughly as wide as the distance from this building to Parkland College, although at its narrowest point, it's a couple miles thinner than that. This is like 15% of the total area of Champagne County, except Gaza has a population close in size to that of Chicago, roughly half of whom are children. There's been about as many Palestinians killed in Gaza as there are undergrads at U of I, and just slightly less than the entire population of Urbana. If you take into account the fact that the US has 62 times the total population of Gaza, that's the equivalent of many millions of Americans dead, all killed in less than 100 days. Imagine being trapped in endless rubble from here to Rantoul with no exit, watching as your friends, family, and neighbors were indiscriminately killed by an occupying force. And Israeli politicians boast openly about this genocide. The president of Israel has flatly denied that there are any innocent civilians in Gaza. Yoav Galant, the Minister of Defense, bragged with a direct quote, "We will eliminate everything," and claimed that they were fighting human animals. The Minister of Heritage, Amichai Eliyahu, said of the mass bombings, "Gaza Strip, more beautiful than ever. Everything is blown up and flattened, simply a pleasure for the eyes." This is a cabinet member. And then further suggested giving all the land in Gaza to Israeli soldiers, and even floated using a nuclear warhead to depopulate the area. While some might try and present Israel as a progressive democracy, that couldn't be further from the truth. Israel has laws on the books restricting interracial marriage. They require different ethnic groups to have different IDs. Jim Crow segregation is alive and well and baked into law in Israel. There's segregated roads and racial quotas for certain towns. Lynch mobs roam freely, supported by the military. And thousands of Palestinians have been held hostage for years without ever being charged with crimes. Supporting a ceasefire resolution in this context isn't just a moral duty, but it's a chance to actually make an impact. The United States is one of Israel's only backers. Countries around the world have cut ties with the rogue state. The US provides Israel with weapons, intelligence, military advisors, and diplomatic cover. The great Palestinian novelist, Gassan Kanafani, wrote that, "The Palestinian cause is not a cause for Palestinians only, but a cause of the exploited and oppressed masses in our era, and that it is not a conflict, but a liberation movement fighting for justice." Essentially, the fight for justice in Palestine is the struggle against racism and discrimination here. It is the anti-apartheid movement of Nelson Mandela. It is the civil rights movement of the 60s and 70s, and the George Floyd movement of 2020. Kanafani, along with his 17-year-old niece, was assassinated by Israel in 1972, but his words live on. Municipalities across the US have taken a stand and called the ongoing massacre of Palestinians what it is, a genocide. Please stand on the right side of history and represent your constituents, along with 2/3 of Americans, in calling for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lily Wright. I'm a resident of Urbana. I've lived in Champagne, Urbana for the majority of my life. I don't have much to say, except that I entirely support a ceasefire, along with more than 2/3 of American citizens. And as we've heard, our local community has been affected by this genocide that is taking place. And as the federal government is not listening to our calls and petitions for a ceasefire, it is the local government and representatives' duty to speak up, listen to our voices, and carry out what we ask for. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jane McClintock. I also am a resident of Urbana and have lived here most of my life. I will also be brief. As the speaker pointed out earlier, the number of people who have been killed in Gaza is like 3/4 of Urbana. It's really unfathomable to consider. And if you take, like, the US Census says that about 25% of the people in Champagne County are children. And so if you take that, it's like all of the children in Urbana have been killed. That many. And we can't fathom that. And it begs the question, as people have asked, well, what can little old Urbana do? You know, Biden's not watching Urbana public television right now. But we're a global community. Our little town is a global community. And I want to speak here to say to my neighbors who are hurting that I'm so sorry, and I hope that the violence ends. As people have said, it breaks my heart, all of these deaths, that the attack on October 7th, horrific. And an eye for an eye is not going to heal it. It's not going to bring those people back. It's going to make us all blind. And ignoring international law is going to set a dangerous and horrible precedent. We can do what we can do here to bring peace in our community. And calling for peace, calling for a ceasefire and end to the death, that's the best way we're going to get the hostages back. We saw that. When were the hostages getting back? In the ceasefire. That's what we need to get the hostages back, and that's what we need to stop all the killing and bring peace. So anyways, I hope that you all will vote for a ceasefire, and thanks for your time.
Hi, my name is Stephen McGuire. I would first like to address people regarding concerns about homeless housing options. Many will say that they pose a risk. The truth is that they mitigate one. I've only been homeless for seven days in my life, and that was out of a place of privilege. But the sense of desperation that it creates can't be fathomed. A person who has their basic needs met is way safer than someone who will do anything for them. Regarding the ceasefire...
Sir, can you make sure you speak into the mic?
Sure.
So the folks at home can hear you.
Sure. Regarding the ceasefire, I'd like to make two points. There's been concern that this resolution will divide people. I'd like to say we're already divided, and maybe part of the healing in this community is that we can talk to one another in meetings like this, even though we disagree. And many of us disagree rabidly, but that needs to happen. We can't tolerate antisemitism or Islamophobia. At the same time, we harm the Jewish people if we don't support a ceasefire, and I'll say why. If we, the politics of the nation-state of Israel are being equated with the Jewish people as a whole. So if the nation-state of Israel engages in acts of violence, people around the world demonize Jewish people. Groups like Jews for Peace and the young man who spoke earlier, Jacob, made clear that the Jewish people are separate from the nation-state of Israel. But if we equate the government of Israel and the Jewish people, then the Jewish people are lowered and degraded when the government of Israel commits violence. And the more we deem the foreign policy of Israel to be sacrosanct under penalty of accused antisemitism, the more likely this will happen.
Sir, could you make sure you speak into the mic? And please address the council so they can hear too.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm trying to address everyone.
I know, everyone can hear if you speak into the mic or some.
And I know many of you will disagree with me. That's okay. I am in support of this resolution because the cycle of violence will just continue if there isn't a ceasefire. I am not under the illusion that this will single-handedly bring about peace, nor should anyone be. But by sharing our collective voices, maybe this will help our state and federal government make decisions. And also, there's been a continual cycle of violence in this region, from the evictions prior to October 7th, which prompted the October 7th, brutal horrific attacks which prompted continual. Let's end it.
Hi, my name is Chris Zelli. I think I'm going to focus on two different issues. The first being the purpose of this resolution, and whether it fits the city government structure. And I think your role representing us, that we are your constituency, and that as your constituency, we are having trouble voicing our concerns with other elected officials, of which this is a large city in their constituency. So by unifying with us, lifting up our voices, as we've elected you to do, allows us to better voice our concerns to our elected officials. They're currently being very non-responsive. Instead of calling for a ceasefire, they're calling for the forestry location of people into Egypt, which is a war crime. Bozinski is actually calling for a war crime. Getting people to try and talk about this is very difficult. That's the role here.
Sir, could you please speak into the mic?
Absolutely. A resolution from this community would speak loudly and does a huge representative favor to the body of the community. Then the second is that there is no debate. There is no picking sides on whether we should have a stop of violence. There is no argument in proactive defense that by stopping violence, we're somehow hurting the right of the state of Israel to exist. That is not an argument that's on the table. We are coming together as a divided community that doesn't agree with each other on some geopolitics, and we need a space in that community to heal. I have Jewish brothers and sisters that are afraid and shamed to wear their stars, that are ostracized by their community because of rabid Zionism. We need to understand that anti-Zionism started in the Warsaw Ghetto as the Jewish Bund, that it was there because oppressed people should never need to flee their land, a lesson that rings true today in Gaza, that the Zionists have lost on their journey. We need to look at how this community is not safe for anti-Zionists, that our students are doxxed, painted with a large brush as anti-Jewish, which is almost a call to violence and a dissent of our community stability. We are having major problems. Antisemitism is not the major concern I have in this community. It is Islamophobia. And we need to put that forward. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
No, it's going to be too low for me. Hi, I'm Axel Haynes. I'm a resident of Urbana, and I support the ceasefire, along with the vast majority of the room and beyond the vast majority of the United States. I think someone quoted 2/3 of the population earlier today. It's my belief that it's a moral imperative that we, as a society, stand up for those experiencing oppression and violence throughout the globe, in every single situation. A lot of people in this room talk about how we didn't say anything about prior conflicts, and I think that's a problem. I think we're supposed to speak up in every single case, and we have failed as a country time and time again. The older I get, the more disenfranchised I become with my politicians, including each and every one of you on the board. I've lived in this community my whole life, and you can all do better. We can all do better. Many of my elders and many of the people on this board were alive during the South African apartheid, and I see zero difference between that situation and the situation in Palestine today. In each case, a military force has been violently supporting inequalities between groups of people, physically separating communities from one another. In each case, there has been famine, loss of communities, harm to cultures, and loss of life. In each case, we hear of the heroes that dismantle these oppressive regimes and the unfortunate ally that the US has made of the oppressors. With all these prior events, there's been a clear moral choice, and that's been a call for immediate cessation of hostilities, and that is the bare minimum that we can do today. One out of every 100 men, women, and children have been murdered in Gaza since October 7th. How many more innocent people do have to die before we begin to treat this like every other atrocity in human history? Our children will look upon this in the history books and wonder what side we are on. I do not wish to have my tax dollars going to killing these civilians because of a massacre that was started 75 years ago by Zionists. I should not have this on my conscience, but I do. So I'm speaking here today because obviously my vote doesn't count. I implore you all to take the simple step to do what is right and give your voice to the voiceless. I know that we, as a society, are able to create peace and unification as we have done in the past, and we will do it again. Bring a little bit more peace in this world, free Palestine, free Congo, and colonization across the globe. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Kruzwick, and I'm here to support the resolution for ceasefire today. I wanted to start by saying that I believe it is this council's responsibility to address this. As we heard, our state representatives and our national representatives do not hear us. They aren't listening to us, and so it comes down to you guys. I also want to say that this did not start October 7th. For 75 years, there's been apartheid and violence in Palestine because Israel has occupied their land. This started 75 years ago, so we can't take the historical context out. We have to remember that. And mostly, I wanted to say, my main question to you tonight is, do you value human lives? After this meeting, many of you will go home to your families, to your children, your partners. You'll be able to hug them and kiss them goodnight. So many families in Gaza, Palestine, do not have the opportunity and never will again. So many parents will go to bed in Palestine tonight weeping, holding their children's clothes because that's all they have left of them. So many children in Palestine tonight will go to bed crying out for their parents, who are no longer alive, to take care of them. There are kids just like your own in Gaza who are suffering. Wouldn't you want someone to take care of your kids? Why are the children of Gaza any less, deserve any less protection than those of yours in the United States? Again, do you value human lives? If you do, you must call for a ceasefire before more Palestinians are murdered. When you go home to your families tonight, will you be able to look into their eyes and tell them that you did the right thing today? Will you be able to look into their eyes and tell them that you are doing your part to save lives? I hope so. Help the people in Gaza, sign the ceasefire resolution, and free Palestine forever. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben Diabald. I've lived in Urbana now for almost eight years. Just on October 14th, just a few hours from here, in Plainfield, Illinois, Wadiya Al-Fuim, a 6-year-old Palestinian-American boy, was killed. He was stabbed 26 times in Plainfield, Illinois. I'll repeat that again. Wadiya Al-Fuim, a 6-year-old Palestinian-American boy, was killed when he was killed 26 times by his landlord because he was a Palestinian. I would like to say, in terms of why this issue matters, and as I said, I do support this ceasefire resolution. You're going to hear a lot about this being an election year, that democracy will be on the ballot, and it is. And I would also like to say, since we do live in a democracy, over 80% of Democrats support a ceasefire resolution. And I believe the average overall is about 66% of Americans support a ceasefire resolution. So Nikki Bozinski, who represents the Illinois 13th Congressional District, which represents Champagne, Urbana, Illinois, has said that Israel, what they are doing, is justified. Well, I am sorry, but what is happening in Gaza, the bombing of hospitals, the killing of children, is not justified. And I would just like, and I agree that all the hostages should be released. And if you actually listen to interviews with Israeli hostages, what they feared was not Hamas, was not Palestinians, but the bombs of Israel, of the IDF. And I will also say, our governor, Jamie Pritzker, when he comes in here, because he also said that Illinois stands behind Israel. Now, I'm sorry to say, I do not stand behind Israel. I do not stand behind my tax dollars, billions of United States, billions of United States dollars being used of what is happening in Gaza. It is the most densely populated population on Earth, and what many UN experts are saying that is a humanitarian disaster. And I would just leave this with a quote by James Baldwin, a famous author. Excuse me, sir, I'm talking. Every children around the world is ours, everyone around the world. And anyone who fails to see that, I am afraid, is incapable of seeing humanity. Support this ceasefire resolution. Be on the right side of history.
Hello, I'm Shawna Miller. I'm a resident of Urbana and longtime resident of Champagne County. I want to let you know that it is appreciated that you will consider the ceasefire resolution, and I hope that you will at least listen to it beyond this conversation here right now. Israel likes to pretend that what's happening over there isn't genocide, but like many have said, it is the most concentrated area in the world, population-wise. It is the size of Las Vegas and double the population of Las Vegas. And more than 5,400 2,000-pound bombs have been sent from America to Palestine. 2,000-pound bombs have the reaction radius of 90 football fields in a space that is double the population of Las Vegas. And then they're telling them all to go down to this, to an airport-sized space, 2 million people being displaced down to the south, which is like an airport-sized space. people being displaced down to the south, which is like an airport-sized space for 2 million people. And then they're bombing that area, too. So, like, how is this not a genocide? That's what I would like to know. If you're bombing buildings with white phosphorus, which melts your skin and flesh to your bone, how is that not genocide? Especially when they're bombing whole apartment buildings full of people? When they are sniping medical professionals through their windows, who are trying to do their jobs to, sorry, to save the injured people that Israel already bombed? I don't understand how this isn't genocide. So on top of this, let's see, where was I? These same hospitals are running low on supplies. When we had the brief ceasefire in November, 5,500 aid trucks came to Palestine. Only 100 more aid trucks than the amount of bombs that we sent over there with our tax dollars. I don't understand how this is not genocide. So I'm just going to end this because I only have a minute left. When 2 million people are displaced and starving in an area the size of an airport, while an area the size of Las Vegas is being bombed around them, you have to wonder what will suddenly be considered genocide in the future if we don't do something about this now, if we don't declare a ceasefire now? Because a simple evacuation warning does not suddenly make this not a genocide. There are plenty more examples of what actually does make this a genocide. And if America is up against genocides, or if America is so against genocides of the past, we shouldn't be aiding and abetting genocides now.
I'm Stuart Levy. I live in Champaign, but I work and shop in Urbana. I'm involved with the Independent Media Center. I have a stake in the city. And I'm an American Jew. And I have friends and family who have lived and visited in Israel. I'd visited it long ago. But whether, and I don't know whether I had any connection with any of the people who were killed, or hurt, or captured on the Israeli side in the October 7th attack. But whether I know any of them, have any connection with them or not, I grieve for them as I grieve for, as casualties of a long-running war. I've been an anti-war activist for a long time. I have grieved for a lot of people. Many of them have been victims of US action in Iraq and in Afghanistan. Now, it is not unreasonable for Israel to respond to that violent action with violence of its own. But the violence that they have brought upon not just Hamas, but on the people of Gaza and also on people in the West Bank, is so vastly disproportionate that indeed it deserves the label that it's coming to be, the incoming charge of genocide. And it's not just, it's not just me saying this. It's people all over the world who are saying this, and a lot of people across the US who are also saying it. The way forward, I agree with Professor Sner, I think, in something in that it's very important, and I think it's a very good thing for the, and our weapons, and our political support. And that's, that's why this matters. The, if there's any, it's hard to find hope in a situation like this, but if there's any hope that there might be, it is that the atrocities are so terrible, Israel is so shocked at being hurt as much as they were hurt, the Palestinian people is so completely flattened in Gaza, that the peace process, which has basically been given no air for years, it's been given no chance to operate, maybe it will be given a chance. Please do what, please, I'm sorry, can I take a moment more? This is really a pocketbook issue. War will spread. It's already spreading. It will, it will drive up costs, it will drive up fuel prices. People will, it's not only people on the far side of the world who are miserable when a war is hot.
Thank you, sir.
Us, we here will suffer too.
My name is Marcy Goldstein. I am a resident of Urbana. I've owned my house for, end of this month, we ten years, very proud of that. I did not come here with any prepared speech. I don't know all the facts and figures. What I do know is that Hamas has attacked Israel repeatedly for so long, and every time there's a ceasefire, they use it to build up their weaponry and to strike even more. I don't necessarily agree with the indiscriminate bombing that Israel is accused of, but on the other hand, Hamas has used humanitarian aid to build tunnels underneath hospitals and schools and large apartment buildings so that if Israel wanted to destroy Hamas, they would have to destroy all the people and facilities above their military positions. And it's got to stop. It's got to stop, and I don't think a ceasefire is the solution. I don't know exactly what is, but I don't think a ceasefire will help Israel or Hamas. Actually, Israel or the Palestinians. I see the Palestinians as separate from Hamas. And Hamas needs to go. Thank you.
Ma'am, please respect other folks' right to speak.
Hi, my name is Lee DeVille, Mayor Marlin, and the members of the City Council. I would like to ask you to reject this motion to, or this resolution for the ceasefire. And I want to mention a few reasons, some of which have been mentioned before, but I want to expound on them.
Sir, could you speak into the mic?
So the first is, is that it's not the business of a city government to opine on international affairs. Okay, I'm sure that there are many pressing needs that the city has that your time would be better spent on. But in particular, I think we, and I think other people on both sides have acknowledged the fact that there is 0.0% chance that any resolution will have any impact on any actions in the Middle East. Okay, this is, this is a motion that could not have any impact. We all know that. It will make some people feel good about it, but it won't actually do anything in the Middle East. But in contrast, such a motion has the potential for negative impact in our community. Okay, as we've seen across, across other municipalities across the nation, we've seen that sometimes these resolutions have been vehicles for people to express divisiveness, anti-Semitism, Islamophobia, other types of bigotry. And I think that for us to do, for us to do something that's not the city council's business, but that has the potential to divide us, is not something that we should do. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, the City Council. My name is Carmel. I've been in the community for about 20 years. The Jewish-Palestinian conflict goes on for over 100 years. The conflict should get resolved via negotiations, which will end in a two-state solution, Israel and Palestine, at least in my opinion. This is not a war between Israel and Palestine. This war is between Israel and Hamas. And this war started on October 7th, when Hamas attacked Israel by getting into villages and towns in Israel, murdering, raping, burning, beheading, raping women, killing children, and kidnapping hostages into Gaza. So this war is against Hamas, not against the Palestinian people. Hamas was actually elected, Hamas in its charter has written the destruction of Israel. No peace negotiations, no Jews in Israel. Hamas charter is clear, the destruction of the state of Israel and expelling all the Jews out of it. And this is written, you can check it out. Hamas was actually in 2005, after Israel got out of Gaza, Hamas was elected democratically by the population of Gaza. But after that point, what Hamas did is went, killed the opposition, threw them out of roofs, eliminated the opposition, and since then, for almost 20 years, there were no elections in Gaza anymore. So the Palestinian people in Gaza could not choose if they want Hamas or not. It's a fact for them. Now Hamas is a startup of terror. What Hamas did is something to, they are the state in Gaza right now. They collect the taxes. But what they did is, they get money from Qatar, they get money from UN refer schools, they get money, even at certain points, from the US government as well, for the population. But Hamas, the taxes it takes, none of those taxes goes into schools, hospitals, welfare of the population. All the taxes that Hamas is collecting goes into one thing, into building an infrastructure of terror that exists throughout the civilian population and civilian infrastructure. Hospitals, schools, there are found weapons underneath cribs of babies, tunnels under hospitals, tunnels under schools. The curriculum of the schools teach hatred, anti-Semitism, and the wanting to eliminate the state of Israel. So by Hamas doing that thing, they're causing the issue for the Palestinian people. They're causing actually war crimes against the actual Palestinian people by using the Palestinian people and their infrastructure as shields against Israeli forces that want to eliminate Hamas. So as long as Hamas is in power, it will be very difficult to, it will be very difficult to have peace in the Middle East. Thank you.
Ma'am, please let the speakers have their time to speak.
Please ask everybody who has been disruptive the same question, because I noticed you keep out, but you're not asking other people who've been.
I'm not seeing the other people. Well, I can't, thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Ron Kester. I live at 1209 West Oregon Street in Urbana. To date, more than 23,000 people of Gaza have been killed, an estimated 9,600 of them children, through aerial bombardment and armored forces on the ground. Gazan hospitals, schools, mosques, and refugee centers have all been purposefully targeted, though none of these essential services has constituted an imminent threat to the state of Israel. Even by Israel's guesswork regarding Hamas casualties, this means Israel's military response has killed more children than enemy combatants, as well as more innocent civilian adults than enemy combatants. The only way to regard this as warfare is to assume that Palestinian lives mean less than other human lives. After three months of massacre in Gaza, Israel's military mission better fits the definition of genocide, not warfare. Regard the words of Dr. Hamam Allah, who worked at Al-Shifa, the largest hospital in Gaza. "This is not the medicine I thought I would be practicing. I always wanted to progress in my field, to learn more, to teach more. I hope to raise my kids to be ambitious, not to think about war, missiles, rockets. Every day, I see a fear in their eyes that I can't do much about. It's very painful. If you have kids, you know how horrible it is not to be able to comfort them, to ensure they are all right, to make them hope for everything beyond living one more day. We want to live freely like other people, to grow scientifically and economically, to walk in the street without fearing bombardments, to make plans. We want to be able to learn, think, grow, travel, dream, to feel like we are really human. This is what life has always been about for us, and now I want the world to know we are being eradicated en masse. This is not what life should look like." Dr. Hamam Allah was killed on November 12th by an Israeli artillery shell that struck his wife's home. Also killed were his father, father-in-law, and brother-in-law, none of them Hamas fighters. He is survived by his wife and two children, ages four and five. I implore you to resolve to support a permanent ceasefire, denounce the Israeli genocide, and call for a long-term solution to conflict between Israel, Gaza, and neighboring nations. This is a time to mourn the horrific destruction and loss of life, but we must collectively affirm our own values against murderous behavior and depraved military tactics wherever we find them, but especially in nations aided and abetted by the United States military. We must all do our part to stop it. Thank you.
Members of the Urbana City Council, my name is Mayon Weinberg. I was born in Urbana, raised in Urbana, and am a current Urbana resident. I'm also the executive director of the Champaign-Urbana Jewish Federation, and I'm representing a very diverse community that includes thousands of Jewish individuals across the county and hundreds of Jewish residents of the city of Urbana. I have been on the phone constantly for the last 24 hours with Urbana residents, deeply concerned and fearful about what would be said in this room tonight, and its potential to foster further divisiveness within our community and a more fearful community to live in. The situation in the Middle East is devastating. Our community crapples daily with the emotional toll and the pain of this conflict, as our own friends and our family members in the Middle East navigate the challenges of daily life amidst the war. I ask you, our City Council members, to listen to the voices of your Urbana Jewish residents. I know that you've received hundreds of emails today. Many of those individuals are too fearful to be here in person. Our community is in pain and is in fear. I know you, too, have spent all day fielding emails and calls. They speak for themselves. I ask you to consider what the goal is in inviting such a discussion tonight, right now at this City Council level. We heard that the goal is to try to bring about peace. I ask if that's what you've experienced in this room tonight. Our goal should be to foster a safer, more inclusive, and inviting community in Urbana. I am inviting you to focus on initiatives right now that unite our communities, not ones that fuel anti-Semitic rhetoric. I'm inviting you to partner with us, the Jewish community, for initiatives that build bridges across our communities. I'm inviting you to actively listen to your Jewish constituents and what they're experiencing daily in our own city of Urbana. Come get to know us. A resolution right now is not useful, is not building peace. Increasing engagement across our communities and partnership is. Thank you very much for your service tonight.
Hi, Urbana City Council. My name is Chibu, and I am a resident of the CU. I am here because I do think that it's important for us to, at the minimum, be having this conversation. Mayor, I appreciate it, slash respected, what you said in the beginning. And I'm councilperson for Ward Two Evans. I appreciated the importance of having free speech. I think that that's something that we kind of have to do from a city perspective, and so that's why I think this is important. I think that we should read into the record, maybe not this time, but in the future, what the actual resolution says completely, because that is how we can ensure that we are not having anti-Semitic tropes, and that we are not being Islamophobic, and that we're being the kind of humans that we want to be that represent the CU. Like, that's how that works, in my opinion. I'm 27, and there are two Palestinian Gazans that I've been following, some of it before the war, but particularly the last 90 days, I've been waking up and purposefully seeing if Bisan, who's 25, is still alive, and if Palestina, Palestia, a poet, is still alive too. She's 22, and I'm 27. So this is part of why I'm standing up here, because I generally don't believe that whether they're a casualty of war, a human shield for Hamas, or whatever else we want to say, these lovely young people... these lovely young people don't deserve to be martyred at the end of the day. And I think we can all individually agree with that, which is important, which is why we should be reading the entire resolution. So at the minimum, I appreciate you all considering it and bringing it to this space. So rock on, Ben. We have been asked by our Palestinian friends and neighbors to amplify their voices, and I hope that this does that, as well as I hope that you all amplify the voices of ourselves to our federal representatives. So this is by the poet Palastia. "I asked my friend, 'I can't postpone, you're crying.' He answered me with tears full of eyes, 'No, I don't have time to cry until tomorrow. Life is a race, and I am tired from chasing time that is killing everything that is left of me. Time races against me, and I race against it. I can't stop to catch a breath, because time, it doesn't stop. I told him, 'I'm tired like you,' but from waiting for time that is not passing, mail that is not arriving, a phone that is not ringing, the time is killing any hope that lives within me." This was first in Arabic translated into English. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Please.
No, you have one opportunity to speak. Thank you.
I can't ask a question?
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Sure. No, we're not taking questions at this time. Does anyone else who wish to speak, who hasn't had a chance to speak? We'll give her just a second.
As engaged, as engaged, concerned residents of Urbana, and because we are invested in the safety and well-being of all people, both here and abroad, we purpose the following for consideration by the Urbana City Council: Resolution calling for a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Whereas the Palestinian people of Gaza are currently facing a campaign of collective punishment by the state of Israel, and whereas collective punishment is categorized as a war crime and prohibited by treaty under international law according to common Article 33 of the Fourth Geneva Convention, and whereas collective punishment is defined within the convention as "all sanctions and harassment of any sort administrative by police action or otherwise imposed upon persons or actions which they did not commit," and whereas this collective punishment of the Palestinian people in Gaza has included sweeping sanctions on access to electricity, drinking water, food, medical care, and humanitarian aid, the forced displacement of millions of Gaza residents, and the continued bombing of hospitals, refugee camps, schools, and other civilian centers, and whereas over 22,000 people have been killed by Israeli military action in Gaza since the October 7th attack carried out by Hamas, which resulted in the deaths of 1,200 people, and whereas approximately 40% of all those killed in Gaza over the past three months were children, including infants, and whereas, according to the World Food Program, nine out of 10 Palestinians in Gaza are currently eating less than one meal per day due to destruction of civil infrastructure by the Israeli military and inhumane restrictions placed by Israeli government on the distribution of aid to Gaza. And whereas, United Nations Secretary-General Antonio Guterres referred to Gaza as graveyard for children on November 6th, 2023, the same day of Day 18, UN officials, including the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights and the head of the World Health Organization, signed a collective call for immediate ceasefire in Gaza, and whereas the director of the New York Office of the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights resigned on October 37th, 2023, citing the unfolding crisis in Gaza as genocide. And whereas countless domestic and international groups representing a diversity of backgrounds and experiences, including Rabbis for Human Rights, Jewish Voices for Peace, Social Workers for Peace and Welfare, Doctors Without Borders, Amnesty International, the World Health Organization, the Norwegian Refugee Council, and International Red Cross, 18 UN agencies, and over 400 staff members of the Biden-Harris Administration have resoundingly called for an unconditional and immediate ceasefire in Gaza.
Is there a line? Is there a line still?
Does anyone wish... Do you wish to address the City Council? We have a speaker. Please let the speaker speak.
My name is Paul Weichsel. I've been in this community since 1960, half of the time in Urbana, half of the time in Champagne. I am a proud Zionist. I believe that Zionism is the movement to realize the national rights of the Jewish people, rights that have been denied for over 2,000 years. Now, I would like to bring what I think is the essence of this discussion that we had tonight, and I think it's very simple. It's been mentioned several times, and I believe it's correct, that a ceasefire will serve one and only one purpose. That is not the purpose of stopping the murder of innocent people. The purpose of a ceasefire, as stated by Hamas itself over and over again, is to give Hamas an opportunity to rearm and continue their struggle. And so it seems to me that there's really only one question here, and I think we have to face it in its stark simplicity. If you believe that under no circumstances should there be a country called Israel, a Jewish state in the Middle East, that's one position. If you believe one way or another, that's the whole issue. If you believe there should be a Jewish state in the land of Palestine-Israel, that's one position. If you believe that Israel should be wiped off the map, that every Jew in Israel should be either killed or sent to exile, that's another position. That's what it's all about. And so I think the people of Urbana, in the process of whether or not you agree that this is appropriate for the City Council or not, have to make that decision. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Obachowski. I'm a lifelong member or resident of Urbana. I live just down the street, and I'm going to continue reading the resolution into the record. Whereas over 150 countries worldwide voted to demand immediate ceasefire via UN resolution in December, and whereas the nation of South Africa, which has an intimate knowledge and history with violent apartheid and whose apartheid system has brought down through an international campaign of boycott, divestment, and sanctions, has brought about a highly detailed case to the UN International Court of Justice charging Israel in genocide, and whereas prior to October 7th, Gaza was already widely regarded as the world's largest open-air prison due to ongoing unbearable living conditions imposed by the state of Israel, including full air, land, and sea blockade, enclosure of its borders by concrete walls and barbed-wire fences, and strict prohibition of the Palestinians from leaving and entering the territory freely. And whereas, the lives of approximately 120 Israeli hostages in Gaza and nearly 5,000 Palestinian security prisoners are being imperiled by the ongoing hostilities, and the most successful moments of hostage return have been facilitated by ceasefire. And whereas, we mourn all civilians lost on, since, and before October 7th, including those Israelis and others killed during the Hamas attacks, and whereas, we condemn all forms of racism, colonialism, antisemitism, ethnic cleansing, genocide, genocide, and collective punishment, and whereas, the ultimate security of the residents of Urbana and the United States at large depend on working cooperatively with all nations to eliminate poverty, injustice, inequality, environmental degradation, and other factors that breed war and terrorism. Whereas, the City of Urbana City Council adopted Resolution 2003-01-002R in 2003 to oppose the US war against Iraq on the basis of ethics, international war, international law, and civilian deaths, including the overwhelming deaths of young children, and whereas, the US Department of Defense provided $3.8 billion in annual military aid to Israel, of which the citizens of Urbana contribute approximately $425,000 collectively each year through federal taxes, and whereas, the US government is uniquely positioned to pressure Israel to end its campaign of genocide, but has instead used its geopolitical power to veto ceasefire measures and limit aid to Gaza. And whereas, polls show that the majority of the people in the US desire an immediate and permanent ceasefire, and over 30 municipal governments have passed ceasefire resolutions, urging the federal government to heed its overwhelming call for peace. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Urbana and its presiding City Council condemn the war crimes committed by Hamas and the ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people by Israel in a call for immediate ceasefire in Gaza, and be it further resolved that the City of Urbana opposes all active and proposed US military aid to Israel in light of the ongoing genocide and its continued violent occupation of Palestine.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Taki, and I'm going to continue reading. Be it further resolved that we call upon the United States Government and President Joe Biden to urge Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu to end the military campaign in Gaza and implement an immediate ceasefire for the protection of the Palestinian people and remains of their home, and be it further resolved that we call upon the US Government and President Joe Biden to prioritize sending ample critical humanitarian aid to Gaza immediately, including food, water, and medical supplies, and be it further resolved that the City of Urbana stands against antisemitism, ethno-nationalism, and islamophobia in all its forms and wherever it arises, and be it further resolved that the City of Urbana stands in solidarity with all civilians facing sanctions, displacement, death, suffering, grief, loss, dehydration, starvation, injury, and despair as a result of the ongoing bombardment of Gaza by the Israeli military, and be it further resolved that the City of Urbana advocates for the safety, health, and dignity of residents in every community, and therefore stands in unwavering solidarity with the dispossessed residents and former residents of Palestine. And finally, be it resolved that we direct the City Clerk to immediately send copies of this resolution to President Joe Biden, Vice President Kamala Harris, Senator Richard Durbin, Senator Tammy Duckworth, Representative Nikki Pozinski, and Secretary of State Antony Blinken. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we're going to move on to continuation of public input. Today, we received, as of 6:45 PM, approximately 460 emails on this topic. They were coming in so fast, and I can assure you that there's probably 100 more after we started meeting. They came in so quickly that City Clerk and staff, we could not categorize them, we could not organize them in a way that could present the contents tonight. Some of them were asked, we were asked to read into the record, others were not, but we need more time to just get those things, the emails organized in a way that we can present what they said. But again, nearly 500 emails came in today alone on this topic. There was one email that was sent last week. It was not, and it was with a request to read into the record. It was not because although it was sent before the meeting, it didn't arrive in our inboxes until 3:00 AM the next day due to a glitch in the server. I'm not sure why, but nobody received it until the next morning. We informed the sender of that, but he, and he resent it and asked that it be read into the record tonight, so I will read that. This is from Christopher Hansen. Dear members of the Urbana City Council, I'm writing in regards to the Hope Village Development Project. I sent public in about Hope Village last week, and although it was emailed nearly 40 minutes before the meetings start, the mayor did not read it along with the other public input emails, and that again because it wasn't received until 3:00 AM the next day. While I find the Hope Village Project intriguing, and I hope it's successful, as I tried to learn more about it, I couldn't help being coming focused on the residents who live in the immediate vicinity of the project site. I do not live close enough to the project site to be personally affected, but I did visit the site, and I listened to the public meetings where the project was discussed. What I saw at these meetings were a number of residents, many of whom live in the Carver Drive neighborhood area immediately south of the project site, express valid concerns about how this project will affect the quality of life and the character of their neighborhood. I saw a great deal of confusion and frustration, and dare I say intimidation, caused by the Plan Commission and staff regarding when and how residents could give public input during those meetings. I saw a number of residents express anguish, feeling they had not been informed, consulted, and included in decision-making regarding the project. I saw the public fed lies regarding when and how construction of the development would be allowed to begin. At the December 7th Plan Commission meeting in front of the residents who already felt disenfranchised, I saw the entire commission stand out, walk out of council chambers so they could discuss the Hope Village Project in a place where those residents would not be able to listen and stay informed. This flagrant disregard for the Open Meetings Act took place with Mayor Marlin and Council Member Mary Alice Wu present, and with the blessing of City Attorney David Wesner. Of the many public officials present, all of whom are required to go through Open Meetings Act training, not a single one spoke up for the rights of the residents in the audience that night. At the December 18th council meeting, I saw Urbana residents from more affluent neighborhoods, including at least one past City Council member, in an attempt to hijack the moral high ground and remove focus from the actual concerns raised, accuse residents of the Carver Park neighborhood of bigotry. The Hope Village may very well turn out to be an excellent idea, and I hope in the future I will be hearing about how amazingly successful it is. However, if the City of Urbana desires its operations make some residents feel disenfranchised and trampled upon, then you've succeeded once again. I believe the city owes the public a clear accounting of their decision-making process on the project, including an explanation and apology for unlawfully excluding the public from Plan Commission discussion on December 7th. Since the action taken by the Plan Commission on that was born directly out of an illegal close meeting, the Commission should be made to nullify the action, redo the meeting, and redo those votes. That's signed Christopher Hansen. At this point, we'll move on to council input and communications, and council members have up to three minutes to share anything they'd like to share. Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committees. This would be a report from the Committee of the Whole, from Councilmember James Quisenberry.
All right, thank you, Mayor Marlin. There is no consent agenda on the regular agenda. Committee of the Whole provided ordinance number 2024-01-001, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, decreasing the number of Class R and T-2 liquor licenses for La Gourmet Cuisine LLC, doing business as La Gourmet Cuisine by Christel, at 401 North Broadway Avenue, Urbana, with recommendation for approval.
And again, just to summarize, this is a request for a Class R2 liquor license, which is the ability to sell beer and wine, and it's for La Gourmet Cuisine. They're located within Broadway Food Health. Two other liquor licenses of the same kind were expired in December and are not being renewed, so the net effect is one less R and T-2 license in the City of Urbana. We recommend approval. I'll second. Moved by James, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item on the agenda is reports of special committees. There are none. Reports of officers, none. We have two appointments I'd like to bring forward. I'll give them both at the same time. The first is for an appointment to the Urbana Arts and Culture Commission. These are both Urbana Arts and Culture Commission appointments for a period ending June 30th, 2026. This is for Xander Hazel. As background, Xander has resided in Urbana for three years. He currently holds the position of Strategic Content Specialist at the Prairie Research Institute. He serves as Executive Director of the Champagne Center Partnership, the local business association for Champagne's downtown, midtown, and campus town neighborhoods. He's got a degree in environmental science, master's degree in entomology. He brings a unique blend of scientific expertise and leadership skills. His experience leading nonprofit organizations has honed his abilities and His experience leading nonprofit organizations has honed his abilities in public relations, communications, and operations management. In a statement he made to apply for this job, he quoted, not job, this volunteer position, quote, "I'm passionate to help cultivate a vibrant arts and culture scene in the heart of Urbana. I am dedicated to fostering creativity, inclusivity, and community engagement by providing support for diverse and dynamic programming." And the other appointment to the Arts and Culture Commission would also be for a period ending June 30th, 2026. This is for Abby Harris. Abby, a resident of Urbana for 13 years, holds the position of the District Music Coordinator for Champagne Unit 4 Schools. Additionally, she serves as Managing Director and Special Events Coordinator for Banks, Bridgewater, and Lewis Fine Arts Academy. She holds a bachelor's degree in music, a master's degree in educational leadership, and she's seeking a role that allows her to integrate all her skills into creating meaningful experiences for youth in our community. Her statement included this, quote, "I'm interested in serving on the Urbana Arts Commission to assist the city in bringing in-town talent to the forefront and to also bring artists of a variety of backgrounds to Urbana. Urbana showcases the community's talents in different settings, art shows, jazz walks, et cetera, and I would like to have a hand in these community events. I want to see how community art can connect people of diverse backgrounds and neighborhoods to share in joy and creation." And I recommend approval of both of these individuals to terms on the Arts and Culture Commission. James?
I'd like to move approval for the two individuals to the Urbana Arts and Culture Commission for term ending June 30th, 2026.
I'll second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, and there is no further business before this council, so we are adjourned.